We'll bring the meeting order. Thank you all for coming. We'll have our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic before which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll have our invocation. Pastor Jerry Wicker.
Let us pray. Dear Heavil Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to live in this valley, Lord. We get to wake up each day and see your beauty. Father, I ask you to be with our town officials, Lord, our fire and our police, Lord, our public works and our staff. God be with the contents of this meeting. Let us be able to be good stewards in what you have entitled us to have here in this Black Mountain. We just ask you, Lord, that we be able to do all that you ask us to do. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Every time I do the Pledge of Allegiance here, I think back some forty-some years ago, back when I was in high school, fifty-some years, years ago now. And the kids always, my friends at the luncheon after would have a meeting of the student body. And they'd say, "So will you still stutter when you say I pledge?" But after saying it so many times, I finally got through it. As they say, as Peter Ripmeister said, "You've got to dig deep." We've got a proclamation here honoring Mr. and Mrs. James Kennedy. Whereas the town of Black Mountain does desire to recognize and honor James and Flossie Kennedy on their celebration of seventy-eight years of marriage. Whereas James D. Kennedy Senior, age ninety-nine, born in Morgan, North Carolina, moved to Black Mountain at the age of seven with his parents, Irvin and Carrie Kennedy, and grew up attending local schools with his nine brothers and sisters. And whereas Flossie, Ray Kennedy, age ninety-eight, born in Mars Hill, North Carolina, has made her home in Black Mountain since nineteen thirty-six. Whereas on May sixteenth, nineteen thirty-six, James married the love of his life, Flossie Ray, and after all these many years of marriage, they continued to live in Black Mountain in the same house and renewed their wedding vows on the sixty-fifth anniversary and again had a seventy-fifth celebration just three years ago, enjoying a small gathering with his family and friends. Whereas James is a veteran of World War II, having served in the U.S. Army in England and the Philippines, returning after his tier of duty to enroll in Veterans Culinary Class at Stevensley High School in Asheville, which led to his employment with Moore General Hospital, DA Hospital, and the Western Carolina Center. Whereas Flossie graduated from Saint Joseph's School of Nursing as an LPN and worked at the Western North Carolina Sanitarium for twenty-seven years, retiring in nineteen seventy-eighth. Whereas James and Flossie currently affiliated with both Mills Chapel Baptist and Thomas Chapel A-M-E-Z Church, which James assisted in building, the current church on West College Street, following in his father's footsteps who helped build the original Thomas Chapel A-M-E-Z. And James is involved in the community as a mason and an Eastern Star. And whereas James and Flossie have two children, James of Winston-Salem in Mildred of Atlanta, and one granddaughter, Karen of Pennsylvania. Whereas James enjoyed hunting and fishing, remains an avid baseball fan, especially Atlanta Braves, and Flossie is a former Eastern Star, household of roots, PTA supporter and a volunteer with the Red Cross. And both continue to enjoy the companionship of their Beagles, Caro and Barney and cat smoking. Whereas James was always willing to give sound advice on issues to the town, to the Board of Alderman. Now therefore, I see Michael Sowell, Mayor of the town of Black Mountain, on behalf of the Board of Alderman. And the citizens of Black Mountain deem it an honor and a pleasure to congratulate James and Flossie Kennedy on their seventy-eighth wedding anniversary, proclaiming this James and Flossie Kennedy Day, signed this ninth day of June, two thousand and fourteen. We have a second proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, can we recognize the Kennedy's children who are in attendance here, please? Flossie, may not excuse me. I'm just so excited about this, you know? It's a great honor. We have their son.
James.
James.
James Junior. And Mildred.
And Mildred. And folks, this is a great occasion because most people don't even get married, stay married for fifty years. But these folks have been married for seventy-eight years. Seventy-eight years. They're ninety-nine and ninety-eight years old. I don't know of anyone else in this valley that's that old or who's been married for that long. So those are major accomplishments right there. And their children are here, they love them, they provide for them, and they just basically take care of them. We have the proclamation, but I'm also taking up money to have a stone placed at the new town square in their honor. So if there's anyone who would like to make a donation, see me after this meeting. And thank you. Thank you for sharing your parents with us, and thank you for being here tonight.
Again, the second proclamation, Art in Bloom Week, June ninth through fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Whereas the Black Mountain Center for the Arts celebrated an annual Art in Bloom event every June since two thousand and seven. Whereas our local and regional artists create fine, create art and fine craft that reflect a wide range of talent and skill. And whereas the Black Mountain Center for the Arts plays a leading role in creating and preserving the culture of the Sonoma Valley. And whereas collaboration with other cultural organizations such as the Icabana International, sixteen-area galleries, regional international foundations, and various corporate sponsors helps to promote our diversity and to stretch our horizons. Whereas over a hundred and sixty community volunteers come together to make Art in Bloom a successful event. Whereas the citizens of Black Mountain are joining with artists, floral designers and gardeners, musicians, storytellers, chefs, audiences, and art supporters from across the state to celebrate Art in Bloom. Whereas two thousand and fourteen marks the eighth year of the three-day Art in Bloom event in Black Mountain Center for the Arts on June the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. Whereas the public is invited and encouraged to attend the opening preview party, the Cottage Garden Tour, with the plein air painters in every garden, a concert of traditional music and storytelling, and the Art in Bloom Festivals and Art Exhibit. Now therefore, I see Michael Sowell, Mayor of the town of Black Mountain, proclaim June ninth through the fourteenth of this year, Art in Bloom Week. Gail is here, and I think she may want to say a few things. Gail Jackson.
Thank you. Yeah? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this on? Are we, okay? It's hard to follow and act like Jamie and Floss, James and Flossie, right? My husband Dennis and I will be marking our forty-fourth anniversary this summer, which means we were married when I was twelve years old. But what I really wanted to say was, we're still occupying the Old City Hall, and it's closing in on a hundred years. And it looks better than ever, and we're really proud of that facility and the help we have from the town of Black Mountain to preserve that facility. And I'm telling you, you'll never see it looking any better than this week when we have the entire upstairs completely filled with flowers and plants that have been brought in by twenty-two different artists to accompany the exhibit there. We invite everybody in the community to take part of this. It's what we call putting the fun in fundraising because it is a fundraiser that helps this nonprofit remain a community center for the whole Swanoma Valley. But more than that, it's just a really good time, and it's an opportunity for people in the valley to also share their gardens with the garden tour. This is Diane Hutchins, she's the committee chair for this year, and she's done a fabulous job in making this year's Art in Bloom better than ever. So would you like to say a few words?
Yes. I get the glamour job, which is to invite you all to please think about joining us on Thursday night for the gala. The food is wonderful, we have ultimate ice cream, so I think you better come. If you can't make that, we do have the garden tours on Friday and Saturday, and you could also just come by during that period of time and see the beautiful exhibit up in our gallery. So just remember my words, "Party down." Thank you.
We have some of the brochures in the lobby of the town hall, so please pick one up and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Before we proceed on a little further, I do want to take some time for, I don't have an award, but I do want to give recognition to one of our own. You saw his picture in the Black Mountain News, and I think you're going to see it up on the screen. Peter Ripmeister. If you've read the article on the Black Mountain News, and it was, and I thank the Black Mountain News for taking the time to do an article. Unfortunately, there was not enough space to really go into depth about what this gentleman accomplished. The Iditaran is a, basically started out as a snow slay race in Canada, almost a thousand miles. They then started some years back, a run, a run for three hundred and fifty miles. Now, we all hear of different runs, ten-k run, five-k run, marathon. Keep in mind what this is. This is running from here to almost Cincinnati, Ohio. And needless to say, it's not running in the south. Keep in mind some of the, some of the parameters that he had to deal with. This is March, it's still winter up in Alaska, there's snow and ice on the, on the ground, as you can see from the ice on his mustache there. Also too, that at this time, because of just the, the way the earth tilts, it does not get light up there till nine o'clock in the morning, and it starts, and the sun goes down, and it gets dark. The sun goes down at three, but it gets dark at three-thirty. So most of the runners had to go ahead and, you can see the light on his, on his head, and so they had to do a lot of their running in the dark. When I read this and I talked to Peter when he first came back, I just, I mean, I'm just, I'm just amazed. I mean, I have run all my life, but this, this is nothing. Can you imagine? This man had to pull his sleigh with his gear on it for three hundred and fifty miles, sleeping out in the middle of the wilderness, and every day getting up and knowing that he's got to do at least thirty-five to forty miles in order to get in under the eleven-day deadline. Unfortunately, the very first day, he went ahead and made a wrong turn and went almost twenty miles out of his way before he was able to recognize, I don't know if he spoke with someone or just exactly how he did it, but he had to backtrack. So that was forty miles that he had to put in, so he didn't do three hundred and fifty, did three hundred and ninety miles. And as the article talks about, about, and, and the way that it is, it doesn't show it up there, but the paper had it, and it's entitled "Dig Deep." And that's what this man had to do. A lot of the times have to, have to, have to dig deep when there, when there's tough, tough times to get through. But to think that he had to do this for ten days with blisters, he had to put duct tape on his feet, several pairs of socks, just to be able to barely walk, forget running. I mean, he was, he was just walking, just, just to try to finish. So I mention this because I think this is something that, that all of us need to read again and again, not just for the praise for, for, for Peter, but just to understand that some people go through a whole lot more than what, than what we go through. And you got to dig deep in order to achieve good things. Okay, we don't have any citizen comments, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. We'll move on then. Communications from the board.
Did you hear this thing from Dean?
Oh, that's right, that's right. I missed that one on there. Dean, excuse me, I forgot to go ahead to Dean. The Government Finance Officers Association, the GFO, GFOA, the Town of Black Mountain, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Did you want to address that and make a couple of comments quick?
I just wanted to really say that it was kind of a team effort, there's a lot of people that were involved in it, and I want to thank all the department members and everybody who contributed to it. Thank you.
Good enough. And before we go on, let me go ahead and ask Mildred and James if they'll just come, come forward here and take this proclamation back to their parents. This is just a signed copy of what I had read there. So, and Carlos certainly addressed it well, so very good. Take a picture of him. Thank you again. Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Now I think we're ready for Josh. Building and zoning, some annual report. Josh Harold, our new director.
This is probably the format you used to see, and this is going to change probably as I get more acclimated, highlight some more of the, of the planning functions that are, that are going on, but for right now, we're going to see mainly building and zoning. Permits for this year versus last year are up a little bit, as you can see. Hundred and seventy-seven last year, up to this point, and this year, one hundred and ninety-six. As far as fees go, we're also up around seventeen thousand dollars and some change for all the permits. And valuations are up substantially, about one point eight million dollars versus last year at this time. And privilege licenses are also up as well, small amount, but they are up a little bit, so it's also good to see.
Josh, where does that valuation number come from?
From the county tax department.
Just to get, that's new. What does that represent?
Represent?
Four, four, you got four million, is it two versus, two point five versus four point four?
Land value.
Is that billion, or what is that number? Looks like four million, four seventeen, nine twenty-four, so.
That's correct.
But what does it represent? I'm not, no, I don't understand what it represents. Valuation of what?
It represents a single-family home valuation.
New, new, new homes, new homes. But that's based upon what the permit actually says, correct?
Yes.
As opposed to someone coming in and doing an appraisal on them?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So that's whatever they fill out in there.
Correct. Whereas commercials, small amount, but it doesn't have a lot of commercial. And as far as your zoning goes, we've been busy on the zoning side. Inspections are up substantially from last year at this time, where we only had fifty-eight done, and this year we've done a hundred and four.
Now is this, okay, I see this is through then the middle of last month.
Correct.
Do we do inspections for the town of Montreat also?
We do not, especially for the town of Montreat.
We do not, we do not.
No, we do not. They have, they have an inspector in Montreat. We, we share sometimes, you know, if, if there's, if there's a need for either side to help the other side, we obviously cooperate with Montreat, but they have their inspector.
These would be solely zoning inspections, this would not be building inspections.
Josh, I had one of these much-publicized violations this year, but what are most of the violations for?
It depends on what time of year it is. Typically, this time of year would be grass would be a typical violation that people are issued for tall grass. Other violations could be junk cars, could be anything from not obtaining a permit before you build something, things of that nature, but it really just varies. Without doing a calculation on it, I couldn't give you a straight answer on that, but.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody got any other questions? The reason I'm just trying to push it a little bit because Josh is a little bit under the weather, so.
No, it's fine. I meant to say, forgive my lack of enthusiasm, but it's cold. A cold in June is no fun, I can tell you that.
You get special dispensation, and, and you're okay to leave to go home. You don't need to stay around.
Thank you.
All right. Matt, the consent agenda.
Sure. You've got, you've got your minutes from your agenda workshop in May, your regular session meeting in May, and your, and your budget workshop on May fifteenth, and then you've got, you've got some budget amendments that I'll go through. When I get to the last one with the golf fund, I probably, I will call on Dean Looby to come up and kind of brief you on that one, since it's got, it's complicated, I want, I want to make sure that we're clear on that one. But, but your first budget amendment is for the police department radios. If you recall, they got a, a grant for eighty percent of the cost of replacing the radios in the police department, and the twenty percent of that comes from the drug forfeiture fund balance. So this is a reflection of appropriating the drug forfeiture fund balance to pay the balance for those radios that we've, that we purchased in the past, and you all had, had been involved with that process. Your second budget amendment is for the hydrology study that we just had Greg Stiles from Baker Engineering do the presentation last month. The Greenway Foundation was kind enough to, to offer a contribution towards that fee. This is to reflect their contribution to that expense, which is about, I think, I think the cost was a little over fourteen thousand, and they've, they've contributed sixty-five hundred towards expenses related to, to the Greenway. You've got a grant that we received for the community garden, it's an, it's an ongoing grant that we receive periodically, but it's in the amount of about fifteen hundred dollars to recognize the revenue for that and for the, what's called the Community Garden Nourishing Grant. And then you've got a budget amendment for the Carver Playground. You know, we got a grant from, from the Kaboom Foundation to build a playground, to install playground equipment at Carver. This will reflect donations that have been made in the amount of nine thousand dollars. And, and currently, what it will do is appropriate our fund balance, the general fund balance, to the difference for the cost, with the cost of the, of the entire playground is twenty-one thousand dollars. We actually have a grant from the Community Recreation Authority that Buckland County has set up, but we don't get that until after July first. So we will come back and recognize that after July first, and, and that will offset the fund balance that we are appropriating. But currently, this budget amendment will, will reflect the donations plus appropriated fund balance so that we can go ahead and get that, get that installed. Your next budget amendment, also related to, to the Carver Playground, is a community recreation grant that we received. And again, I want to, to applaud the Recreation Department for reaching out and seeking out these grants, but this is for four thousand dollars. We already received this, this amount, and that goes also towards the playground equipment. It's actually the, this is the preparation for the site, mulch, building up, building the area and making, and making the area safe for the actual equipment. But this is four thousand dollars that we received from the county currently, and so this reflects that revenue plus that expense. Next, you have a budget amendment to, to add some funds to our capital reserve funds. If you recall, last year, we set up a handful of capital reserve funds for, for ongoing and future projects that, that we wanted to save money for. This will put an additional fifty thousand dollars towards the dredging of Lake Tomahawk so, so that we can do that this winter, and twenty-five thousand dollars towards the future purchase of fire department equipment, the, the purchase of a fire truck as we continue to set money aside for that. And then finally, you have the budget amendment for the golf fund, and I'm going to call on Dean just to step, just to come up briefly and go through why we're doing that and what that means. As you're aware, as of May first, we have, we have regained our, the management responsibilities at the golf course, and that, and that is why we are, we're doing this now. And I'll turn it over to Dean.
You know, there had been some talk for a while about us taking back the golf course. So I have been in contact with Google Killian now for probably three or four months to get some clarity about how that was going to be reported in our financial statements coming up. And they in turn have been in contact with the LGC and the State Treasurer's Office. And it really sort of comes down to the collectibility issue. This budget amendment today represents the amount of money that we have advanced to Billy Casper Golf. Actually, the general fund has advanced that money to the golf fund so that the golf fund could then advance it to Billy Casper Golf. That is the, the two hundred and ninety thousand is the, is the amount that we have advanced in the last ten months of this fiscal year. And the LGC has advised us, normally these are just done as balance sheet entries because the assumption is that it's all going to be paid back. And the LGC has advised us that in this situation, that they would request that we, or they're requesting that we do it as a transfer. It has no effect really on any amount of money that's given back and forth, that's not going to change at this point. But that's basically the, the situation.
Ken, have you come up with a, with an exact figure or close to an exact figure of what you think because of decisions from not the previous board, but two boards ago when they made this decision to go ahead and, and enter into this ill-conceived agreement? How much money total that this town has lost?
Yeah, the, the loss will come down to right around four hundred thousand dollars over a thirty-two-month span. We've had, we had the course, Casper ran the course for thirty-two months.
And so then Dean, of that, that, that number, how much of that are fees to Billy Casper Golf? Fees and costs?
It'd be approximately half that amount, about around, little under seven thousand a month, times thirty-two months is ballpark around.
Half operations, half fees.
Correct.
Any other questions? Before we go on, before we hear a motion to go ahead and vote on it, I would like to go ahead and say that that particular figure of four hundred thousand dollars would have been close to a half a million dollars because this board had off, as if the first of the year, had basically had its fill and wanted to get this golf course back. I think that that's one of the reasons why you saw a change in the board last, the last board, because people were just fed up with the decisions that had been made. And so this board authorized the manager and the town attorney to go ahead and possibly use the mechanism in the contract that is, we could buy the amount for ninety-four thousand dollars. But thank goodness that our town attorney went ahead and looked at the contract closely, went through it, and figured out that because of the fact that they had not made eighty percent, had not generated eighty percent of their projected budgets, that then the contract was basically going to be null. So I like to say that Mr. Ronald Snead saved this town close to ninety thousand dollars because of going ahead and finding that in the contract. Very good.
And that's all you have for, that's your, that's your consent agenda for the meeting?
Do we have, do we have a motion?
So do.
Any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we come to the real fun part. No more citizens' comments. Like I know, we got one more thing. We got the adoption of the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina. Snead, if you can lead us through this, please.
This is an agreement between the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina and the Black Mountain Parks and Greenways, Inc., the foundation that's been raising money for not only the town square but other Greenway projects. They have some money now, they're continuing to raise money, and effective July first, they're turning the, basically the project over to the town, although it's on our property, our project anyway. And they plan to take what funds they have in future funds and put those in the, in the West Community Foundation of Western North Carolina as an endowment. Willie Headley is donating largely to that, to create a fund for, depending on how you look at it, maintenance repairs for the upkeep and progress in the town square. This agreement was put together between This agreement was put together between the foundation and... I'll just use the same language as the contract, Black Mountain Parks and Greenways, Inc., as the organization whereby they agreed with the foundation that they would place the money with the community foundation and that the interest, the income off of that fund would be distributed annually if requested or if wanted and directed by the foundation or the Greenways Foundation to work at the town square. And this money is designated only for use on the town square. If not used, then that interest would roll back in. The question arose on this board. One of the questions was, there's a provision in the agreement that if we're going to rate the principal, go in and take something besides the interest, who would approve that? The original provided for the community foundation, the Greenways Foundation, the town square steering committee, and the town of Black Mountain approved such removals of money from the principal. It's not our money, and the one question was, why is the town in it? And I'll tell you my reason. I think the town needs to be in that agreement. But the problem that I spotted or saw was the town square steering committee was a board appointed by this town. And we're sort of... It's not legal for us to create a body that can outvote us. And since all of those parties had to agree to distribution, went back to the Greenways Foundation and said, "We know you have a great interest in a committee that guided you on this, but if you make that your committee and not our committee, then that hurdle will be covered." They did that. Came back to you at the agenda meeting, and a couple of other issues were raised. One is, how do we know for certain that this is the only thing the money can be used for? I've made some recommended changes to the purpose statement, and the Greenways Foundation, the community foundation, agreed to it. Added a provision, number seven, for reporting and accounting that whereas the foundation agrees that at least quarterly they'll provide to all of the signatories to this agreement, the town of Black Mountain being one of those, the town square committee appointed by the foundation, by the Greenways Foundation and the community foundation, they will provide at least quarterly a statement of income to that fund and money out from that fund. They've modified my language a little because they're going to have interest income. They said, "We've got to report that too, your books won't balance." The provision does say that you do not have to disclose the name of donors, obviously. That's donors' preference. But at least we can see what kind of flow is going. And the purpose, the interest of this town, I don't know about all the aldermen, but obviously, I looked at this as a long-term project, and I requested some changes to this. And I requested the town remain a party to this agreement because theoretically, 100 years from now, you're going to have a town square. You're going to have this endowment. You're going to have money coming out. There may not be a Greenways Foundation. There may not be a town square committee. And that's why I thought the town needed to be a part of the agreement. The second reason, I think it's significant that the town be a party to the agreement, is those of you who've been here long enough to listen to this walking, part of it was that somebody beside the taxpayer would bear some of the burden for maintaining the town square. And the Greenways Foundation stepped up to cover that. And some of our citizens have been very generous in putting money into this fund so that you have an endowment that creates that safety net for funds to keep the square up. And the town probably, knowing that in the event there's a vote that pulls all of the principal out and spends it on a capital project, the safety net's gone. So I thought that was a reason that the town still wants to be a member of this agreement. Any questions or anything I missed or any questions raised the other night I haven't addressed?
The number one priority, I think you have addressed, but I just want you to talk on it just a little bit more. This money is protected forever. At the point, it's protected unless all those groups we just made voted to pull it all out and spend all the principal. But even if you do that, it can only be spent on the town square. Very specifically, this is the only place this money will be spent on, whether we rate all the principal or not.
Ron, there is a provision that if the Greenway Commission Foundation ceases to exist, then the community foundation could make a decision at that point to distribute to another 501(c)(3) or the town of Black Mountain.
Yeah, you're talking about the body that directs the spending of the money as it comes out. The Greenways Foundation stands in that role now. And the original agreement provided that in the event the Greenways Foundation ceases to exist, then the foundation, the community foundation, would find some other entity that could serve that purpose. We did add that in the absence of such an entity, then the town of Black Mountain will be the one. Again, looking down the road 100 years.
And I would say too, just add one comment on the... That we discussed at the agenda meeting about the reporting. That it has been the opinion of the board. We have not voted on it, but I have been given direction as the liaison to the town square steering committee that the town board would like to encourage for public inspection a report by the town square steering committee. It's not something that we can demand, but we've requested, and Dean has been working with folks on the steering committee, a report that would show grocery receipts received for the project and then a detail of disbursements. And that intended for public inspection. We think that that is a fair record to ask for the public since it's a community event, you know, obviously directed by the Board of Aldermen. The committee was formed, and so we think that's appropriate. We'd like to see that, you know, forthcoming here in the next few weeks.
If I could clarify that statement slightly. We have the town square steering committee, which did direct a lot of the activity, but the funds are held by the Greenways Foundation. It's who you're making that request off.
Right, that's correct. That's correct. That's correct. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
We have a follow-up motion to authorize Matt to sign this agreement for the town.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes unanimously. New business, the award of helmet and badge to retiring Deputy Chief Craig Bannerman.
All you need to do there, Mr. Mayor, is declare... Deputy Chief Craig Bannerman retired as of June 1st, and we would like to declare his helmet and badge as surplus equipment so that they can conduct the ceremony and award that to him.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's also unanimous. Now the fun part. Fill the vacancies on town boards and commissioners. Well, the ABC board is first up. And this has been made pretty simple for everyone here. There's one opening and one applicant, so... Do I hear a motion for appointing Deborah Wooton to the ABC board for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2017? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Deborah's appointed to the ABC board. Now we come to the Greenways Commission. And we have two openings, and we have three folks who have applied. So before we go ahead with any nominations, the way that we've got this set up then was, correct me if I'm wrong, Sneed, is that fact that when someone makes a motion and nominates somebody, the moment they get... If they get three or more votes, then they're automatically on the board.
That's the way I think Anna's got you outlined earlier.
But there again, what I'm saying is that if we only got two, then that candidate is put aside, and then we go to the second candidate and the third candidate and the fourth, whatever. Okay, so it takes three or more votes in order to appoint someone. So are there any nominations for the first vacancy on the Greenways Commission?
I'm nominating Robert Ohr.
Robert Ohr is nominated.
I'd like to nominate...
Let's vote. Yeah, we're going to vote on each one at a time, okay, to see if we get through. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that was a 5-0 vote, so he's on there. Okay, now we've got a second nomination.
I'd like to nominate Amy Parker.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, that's also unanimous, so Greenways is taken care of. Now we get to the Historic Preservation Commission. Again, on that one there, we just have the one, Teresa Hachow. For watching. So that is... Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's 5-0 then, yeah. All right, let's go to the Housing Commission. Housing Commission, we've got two openings, and we've got two people running. All the... Do I have... Someone needs to make a motion?
Nominate Bob Hawley.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Bob is appointed.
I think there's only two on there, isn't there?
Mm-hmm, there's just two vacancies.
I'd like to nominate Robert Chilmonic then. Chil...
Chilmonic.
Chilmonic.
Okay, so I'm looking at... Was that one on the sheet I had here? That's not this.
Thinking it was...
But it's on the other sheet, though.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that's another 5-0, so the Housing Commission is taken care of. On the Planning Board, we have two vacancies. We have four applicants. Do I...
I'd like to nominate Michael Reyes.
Okay. All in favor of Michael, please signal by saying yes or aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's...
I'd like to nominate Pamela Norton, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all in favor of Pam?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that's 5-0. So those are the two on the Planning Board, and they are serving their second term. The Recreation Commission, three openings, and it looks like five is on the down here also.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Don McMahon.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Don gets it 5-0, and I would like to recognize that Don went ahead and won the 70 to 75 category of the half marathon 10K. He ran the 10K race in Asheville this weekend. So congratulations to Don. We have another nomination.
I'd like to nominate Peter Warner.
Peter... Peter Warner. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Another 5-0. And we need one more.
I'd like to nominate... Go ahead.
You can go ahead.
Ray Nightingale.
Okay, Ray Nightingale is nominated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that's those three. Recreation Commission is taken care of. We've got the Urban Forestry next, three applicants, and three opening positions.
I'd like to nominate Don Wooton.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, go ahead, we need two more.
I'd like to nominate Andrew Wagner.
Okay, Andrew Wagner applying for a second term. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. And the third one.
I'd like to nominate Ryan... Is it McCubbin? McCubbin or McCubin?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have those three. And the last one is the Zoning Board of Adjustments. We have one vacancy for a third alternate position, and we have three applicants.
I'd like to nominate John DeWitt for the third alternate position.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's also 5-0, and that concludes our... This went a lot easier than when Mayor Leonard and I were going to get some of yours back. So thank you, Anna, for...
Yes, thank you, Anna.
Making this simple. Okay. Next, communication from staff. Town Attorney, Mr. Sneed.
One brief statement, as the board knows, the town knows, we won the settings bond case and claim on the bonds at trial level. It's been appealed. We're still in the process of putting together the record on appeal. So that's just in process. The town will crawl on it.
Let me just ask Josh a question. Josh, we're talking about these new permits. Off the top of your head, how many permits do we have going on for building up in the settings?
Five.
Five?
Yes, sir.
All right, Matt?
Just two things. I would remind you, of course, that for all the appointments that you made tonight, they'll be sworn in at your July meeting. And so from that point forward is when they'll actually begin serving their terms on... They're, of course, free to go to any meetings between now and then, but they'll actually be members of those boards after the July swearing-in. And then I just wanted to remind you that June 16th, that's next Monday, we scheduled our public hearing for the budget at 6:00 in here. And I would encourage anybody to come and make comments. And we have documents here in the clerk's office and at town hall. If anyone wants to come and inspect those too. And you all should have copies of your budgets as well.
6:00.
6:00 PM, next Monday.
This Thursday?
No, I'm sorry, next Monday. Next Monday, June the 16th, 6:00, week from today, in this room. Yes, sir, that's all I have.
Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
Yes, I'd like to say something, and I think it's an appropriate time to say it. Actually, what spurred this on in church Sunday, the sermon was about being unified. And... But just because you're unified doesn't mean you're uniform. And, you know, you don't have uniformity necessarily. And the first thing that popped in my mind was this town operation and how it works. And I couldn't be more pleased after, while we're getting ready to finalize the budget and listening to what I heard tonight from the Center for the Arts, what's going on there, what's going on with the museum, what's going on with the town square. And the number of volunteers that come forth to work with the town is just amazing to me. And I think that's why we have the quality of life that we have in this town. But I will tell you this, I think the base of it all starts with our town staff. I couldn't be more pleased with what I see going on all the time, daily. I think that's where it starts, the leadership from our town manager and our assistant town manager. The process, the process to me is as important as the actual result. And the process that we went through transitioning the golf course is the way I like for things to operate. Looking at the facts, coming up with the decisions. We all don't necessarily have to agree, but I think we have our focus on the same goal. And I would like to say thank you so much to all parts that contribute to make this town what it is.
You're here.
And I just wanted to bring that up.
You're here. Very well said. Very well said.
One thing I'd add, Mr. Mayor, and that is the event that was down at Ingalls Parking Lot on Saturday morning, a public safety event. And I don't know how many people were able to attend. I did... I was not able to attend. We had... Actually, had two family weddings on Saturday, one at 11:30 and one at 5:00. So the day was sort of blocked out for celebration. But I will say that at the 5:00 wedding, I was waiting for the bride to come down the aisle, and somebody was telling me about how impressed they were with the whole event on Saturday morning. And they actually had taken some young people along with them. And I think, and they were particularly impressed with, you know, with the demonstration and I suppose you'd call it a dramatic portrayal of what can happen when you're texting while you're driving. And it was a message well sent, well received, and spoken about out in the community. So thanks for everybody who had a hand in putting that on.
Good work. All right, if that's it, meeting adjourned.